Like Doug Bird. So excited. I'm good.
No, just stuff that I stock. We'll put some of the stupid things that I make on Instagram or Facebook.
Which I wouldn't recommend it because it's expensive. I mean, if you want to change your tax, which you don't really need to. Because it will plus, well, plus it also screws you over because you're both high income earning, so there's no benefit. I don't think you even have to tell us. I think technically you're supposed to like change your status. There's no reason to. I mean, Megan still, everything is separate, though we did add Ben to her insurance, that's it. I really like what insurance I had it.
Please stand for the pledge. Angela, roll call please.
Counselor Osberger.
Present.
Counselor Bronson.
Present.
Counselor Hegi.
Present.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
President Pro Tem Thorstad.
Here.
And Mayor Coleman.
Present. Let the record show that there are seven present and none absent. We're going to open up this work session. I'm going to hand it off to Cecily and she can introduce what's happening.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. So today we do have two guests from the League of Oregon Cities who've prepared a training for you. This will review some of the things that we already reviewed in your first training, but it's a good reinforcement and they have some more details for you. So I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Pierce and Robin Klein from LOC.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? Um, so my name is Jamie Pierce. I'm the General Counsel for the League of Oregon Cities. Uh, with me today is Assistant General Counsel, Robin Klein. Um, and we do trainings like this across the state. We just got done doing um, a training with this and other related topics. Um, and every thirteen thirteen regions across the state. And so we're glad to be a little more local uh, tonight and to be able to tailor the training also to the city of Sweet Home, which we aren't always um, able to have the opportunity to do. Uh, so before we get started though, it's really helpful for us as trainers to kind of know uh, who we are uh, speaking with and who is in the room. And so obviously you, we have the council here and staff, but if um, the council and staff wouldn't mind just going around the room and saying, um, how long you've been on council, if this is your first role with the city, or if maybe you were on a planning commission beforehand. Um, that is very helpful for us as we go through our training. So I don't know who wants to go first, but.
I guess I'll go. Oh, um, I'm Dylan Richards. I've been here for four years and yeah, this was my first role.
I'm Ken Bronson. I've been on for almost two months. However, I've been involved with numerous uh, organizations, school boards, uh, transportation, business, public, many functions throughout my seventy years on this planet.
I'm Chelsea Augsberger. I have been on council since January and this is my first um, opportunity to serve the community.
Um, Susan Coleman, I've been on council since twenty seventeen. This is my, the beginning of my third year uh, as mayor. I've served in regional committees as well, so.
My name is Josh Thorstad and I'm on my second year on the council.
My name is Angelita Sanchez and this is the start of my second term as a city councillor.
Hi, my name is Aaron Hegi and I'm new as of January, so first role with the public ci- with the city.
I'm Cecily Pretty. I'm technically the Administrative Services Director, but I was the interim Assistant City Manager and currently the interim City Manager.
I'm Angela Clegg. I'm the Planning and Building Manager.
Blair Larson, City Attorney.
Greg Spreeman, Public Course Director.
And Jason Ogden, Chief of Police.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for introducing yourselves. Um, so we're from the League of Oregon Cities, as you are aware. Uh, the league really is serving as a member services resource, so we have every city. Every city in the, uh, every incorporated city is actually a voluntary member of the League of Oregon Cities, which is pretty exciting because we don't force membership. You voluntarily choose to become a part of the organization. And we do a lot of things um, on the statewide level. We obviously do um, a lot of legislative advocacy, especially this time of year. It's really big. And we represent your city in front of the state legislature, but one of the um, things that my department specifically does is yes, we're attorneys. We are, you know, attorneys for the League of Oregon Cities. We are not necessarily the City of Sweet Home's attorney. You have one. Um, but we do a lot of education and so um, we were asked to come out here and kind of especially, it sounds like there's a lot of newer council members who are more fresh on your feet than not um, to kind of go in and give a little overview about roles and responsibilities. Um, you know, as we know, there is no how to be a city councillor one-on-one. Uh, you're not given a book, you know, when you first start. Uh, you don't learn about it in school. Maybe the best education you get from it is watching a show on TV where there's a mayor, you know, and maybe a city council, but um, that's not how we do things in Oregon. Uh, Oregon has a uh, local government situation where we have home role authority and every two hundred and forty-one cities in the state operates slightly differently. So um, with that in mind, we will hopefully provide more clarity about what it is to be a councillor or a mayor or whatever staff person role it is with the city to really start the city off with a good, you know, footing to go this next term. Uh, so next slide. Um, so we're going to cover a couple of things today. Um, obviously, we're going to talk about what it means to be a group versus the team and I promise you it won't be too um, we won't hold hands and sing songs around a campfire. I won't force anybody to do that. Uh, we'll talk about effective city council habits. Um, there's been studies done about what makes effective city councils work well together. Um, and then we'll go specifically into the governing documents of Sweet Home and as I said, there's two hundred and forty-one ways to run a city in the state of Oregon. So we're going to talk about specifically how Sweet Home does it. And if you don't like how it's currently ran, ways that the city can tailor those documents to better fit your community. Um, so I also start off by saying that Robin and I are both very interactive in our trainings. Um, so if you have a question about anything at any time, whether it's me speaking or Robin speaking, just raise your hand. Uh, we are, the dialogue part is our favorite part of the training because again, I want to make sure that you don't step out of this training with more questions than you have answers that were given to you. We really want to make sure that this is helpful for you and meets the needs that you guys have. Uh, next slide. So we'll start off, pretty basic question. So what do you see in this picture here? And there's no, there's no silly answer. I mean, anybody can name off whatever you see. Don't be shy. I'll start. You're an airplane. Great. And what kind of players do we have in the, in the picture here? Yeah, you have flight, flight crew, right?
Passengers.
Passengers. Yeah, do we have any sort of groups on this? But like, can somebody identify a group in this picture? Got people.
Got a group of people video recording, I mean, filming.
Clearly this is not a real picture. No one is this happy or excited to be on an airplane. Like, especially recent events. No one's this excited to be on an airplane. Um, but yeah, we have a group of people, right? We have passengers, we got flight crew, we have whoever else. You're all just in a room together, in a plane together, sitting there with no real shared objectives, right? The only shared goal that maybe this group has is we're trying to get from point A to point B. But point B might not be our final destination, right? I might have a connecting flight. The flight crew is probably getting sent back to a different city, whatnot. Um, so that's a group. We all know what groups are. But what about a team? Do we see teams as part of this group? Is the flight crew working together? Are they a team? I'm seeing some heads nod. Anyway, yeah. So why is the flight crew a team? What makes them a team versus just a ragtag group of people on a plane? Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. And they have a, do they have any shared goals? What, what are some of those shared goals? Yep. Yep, something goes wrong, they're gonna, they have all their training, right? You know, they have probably a lead flight crew person, they have the pilot. And they're all gonna act on their training if, you know, God forbid, an emergency happens, right? And they'll start maybe even directing, they'll probably pull in members of the passengers to say, hey, you do this, you do this, right? Versus, you know, passengers, like they're literally strangers. They probably don't really have any shared interests other than getting to their destination on time and safely. Uh, um, and so it's a real picture, even though I'm gonna, it makes me laugh because I get no one's this happy on an airplane, crew or passenger wise, but I think it gives a good example of really the core basics of what's different between a group and a team. So kind of flipping that, you know, you as a council, um, do you guys think that you are more of a group or a team or both? Or what are your thoughts on that as a city council? Okay, so what makes you guys a team? Yep. Are you guys, did you guys maybe start off especially maybe January first, more of a, as a group than as a team? Yeah, why elaborate on that? Yeah. Yeah. It's only February. Yeah. Do you guys have shared goals?
Goals, yeah, goals are coming.
Yeah, so at some point, hopefully you'll adopt some goals. So that you have, you guys are both working towards the same thing, right? It's become more of a team than versus just a group of folks who represent your community. So yeah, so next slide, please. So I'm going to state the obvious. So really the difference between a group and a team is that group members are really independent of each other. Right? When you were first elected or when you ran for election, you really kind of had your own world, like you, you were a candidate and you were there because you cared about your community, so you ran for election. But you didn't really have a shared goal with anybody else, right, on this council? You weren't actively working towards a city goal or fixing a city issue. Your goal was just to be on council so that you could start doing those things. Um, during the election time, the results are on an individual level. Either you're elected or you're not. Right? You, you, your work that you do does not have an impact really on anybody else. Versus now as a team, or ideally where you want to get to as a well-working team, is that you're now interdependent, right? Does anybody on council have any authority to really make any decisions as one person?
No.
Absolutely, right? Even as mayor, you really have very little authority to do anything. Maybe appoint some committee members, but really that probably has to be approved by the rest of the council. Yes. Yeah, you need to be able to count to four, right? You need to be able to convince four or three others to get a four groups to have a quorum. And so you really are interdependent on each other and you're also viewed as a group as a whole, right? One person on council does not make any decision. It's the whole team of you. Um, and you're judged, judged as a collective. So we're going to go a little bit more into building a team. So next slide, please. So some aspects of what makes a good team. So I have some listed here. I have communication, um, respect, goals, knowledge. Anything on there that you think's missing though? Or I would like really for you to explain what, in your mind, what makes a good team versus a group? Maybe there's experiences you have from being on a sports team when you were younger or currently. What are some things that you have experienced that in your mind has really helped foster a team environment versus just a group?
I'd have to agree with what you have on your list. Um, mutual respect and then common goals.
Yeah.
Working towards a shared objective.
Yeah. Any other thoughts? Are there anything that would help work towards communication? Work towards respect, work towards identifying shared goals, knowledge? I mean, I think you all are taking the first step for knowledge, right? You're, you're attending a training to increase your knowledge, right? So kudos that we're all here today. This is one step. Don't let it be the last time you attended training. There's always lots to learn. Um, especially folks who are new. I know the staff's laughing. They're like, oh yeah, there's a lot to learn to city government. Uh, it's like drinking from a fire hose because like I said, no one knew. I mean, so for the more veteran members of council, who here had an idea of what it was like to be on council when you first ran for election and who here looks back and think, well, that was different than what I thought? Anybody? Yeah, a hundred percent. Thank you for being honest. It's true. Um, there's a lot of knowledge to be gained. Um, and there's things that you can do to foster um, building a team. So next slide, please. So shared goals. Um, again, you want a shared understanding of your personal goals and your team goals and then, you know, what you can do to get to those goals. So we talked about how there's, it sounds like there's going to be some team built or a goal setting in the future and that, and Robin will touch more about that in the, in a later slide. But you know, you guys are basically on a road trip together. And if you, does any, I mean, if you don't know where you're going, right? Are we going to Disney? Great, we're going to Disney. Going Disneyland? We're going to go Disney World. Right? You need to identify which Disney you're going to. Okay, and then you need to figure out, well, how are we going to get there? What's our budget? Can we fly? Do we drive? Right? It's going to matter if you're going to Disney World or Disneyland. Okay, I know this sounds silly, like you're talking about like planning a family trip, but ultimately running a city is no different. Right? You need to know what your goals are because you are being faced with so many issues. Every, there's lots of community members in the room today. Obviously, they're here to tell you about things that are happening in the community. And you only have limited capacity. You have limited time, you have a limited budget. So you need to identify the goals in which you can focus on to get the work done, right? So we need to know where are we going? What route are we taking? And then you have your, your staff in the room who are also part of that team. Right? So people always talk about, you know, especially the city manager, and we'll talk more in detail about what a city manager does versus the rest of staff. But you know, you're going to tell the city manager, hey, we want to go to Disneyland. And then you say, oh, also we have it in the budget to, to drive. We don't have it in the budget to fly. And then really, it's the city manager's job to figure out where are we stopping along the way, right? When are we filling up gas? Where are we getting our dinners? How long are we staying at Disneyland? Things like that. So it's a really simple analogy, but I think that's the best way I know how to really talk about um, the, having the shared goals. And then the shared ownership. Right? We all decided, four, at least four of you decided we're going to Disneyland. So then now, great, we made a decision, now let's support it. Let's actively work towards this decision that we made as a council through the governing process, which is having a quorum. And let's go there. Everyone can contribute, right? You know, Counselor Bronson, you can bring the gummy worms, right? You know, Counselor Augsberger, you can bring the crackers. I don't know. Someone else can bring the sodas. Okay, so you can, everybody bring something to the table. You all have your specialties. You all have different backgrounds, professional, otherwise, personal, outside of council. And one of the beautiful things about city governance, you bring that all to the table and you're all elected for different reasons to be here to represent your community, which is a diverse community, right? There's lots going on in Sweet Home. People, people don't think that, but there are. And so everyone needs to contribute that. So and I think also a lot of times um, that goes into everyone expresses their ideas and opinions. So I've never sat in on your council meeting before, so I don't, I don't know. I'm not picking on anybody when I say, I'm sure most councils, most groups, teams, they have some more vocal folks probably than others, right? And then a lot of teams have more reserved folks, right? We all have our, we all know where we are in that spectrum. And it's obviously good to hear from the folks who are more vocal, but you don't have to worry about knowing what their opinion is, right? They're going to tell you. But then it's also important just to hear from the quiet folks as well too, right? So making sure everyone has the room to express their opinions, express their ideas, because again, you are all elected to represent a certain group of people to be here. Um, no one feels threatened by conflict. That's hard. You're kind of in an adversarial role in that you're, you're dealt and you're being presented with dealing with really challenging issues. Okay, if running a city was easy, we wouldn't need city councils. Right? You'd have one staff person, they could figure it all out. We all know, and if you don't know, you will know, running a city is really, really hard. And there's a lot of issues to deal with, like not only the potholes, but the water, your aging water infrastructure, right? Personnel issues, uh, public safety issues, right? I mean, again, planning issues, how are we going to grow? There's so many things that cities deal with. It's actually why I love my job, working in a, um, the city attorney world is that I never get bored. I'm always constantly learning. So it's, it's very much a big role. And you really have to, I think, trust your, your colleagues. Right? You have to trust, okay, it's just like being on a sports team. I'm going to trust the point guard to do their job. I'm going to trust the forwards to do their job, right? They have their skill sets, they're smart, they brought something to the table, let's make sure we trust them and also trust them to have the best interests of the city. You guys are not paid to be here. Okay, you guys are paid to be here. You guys are not paid to be here, which surprising, a lot of people don't know that. Right? You truly are, you ran for election because probably you just care about your community. Right? And I think when, when councils deal with conflicts, because you're going to deal with conflicts, you're not going to agree a hundred percent, you know, seven to zero every time on every decision. I think it's really important to go back to, okay, you know, you know, Counselor Sanchez might have this opinion, but I have to remember she, she's speaking from a place where she cares about her community. I don't have to agree with her, but let's not take it personally, right? And I'm not picking on you. I'm just trying to. Perfect. Um, and then again, participative decision-making. So it really just homes back into, there's seven of you. And again, I know, I'm sure there's more vocal folks than others and depending on maybe the topic you're talking about at the time, some of you are going to be more passionate than others. Um, but it really is a group decision. And again, you need to be able to count to four. Uh, so uh, next slide, please. So I'm going to hand it over to Robin. And she's going to go over habits of highly effective councils. But before we move on, any questions about team versus group? I know it seems pretty rudimentary, but it really is at the core, something that's important for a group of folks to work together. Any thoughts or questions? Okay, Robin?
Thank you, Jamie. I'm Robin Klein, Assistant General Counsel. I'm excited to be here this evening. I'm used to when I'm presenting, walking around and moving and being a little bit uh, more free than this table, so hopefully I um, am always speaking into the microphone, so. Um, so yeah, eight habits of highly effective councils. Jamie talked a little bit about thinking how councils somewhat can be like teams, um, sports teams. Do we have any sports folks on council or on staff? You define it. We're open.
I'm a cheer dad.
Cheer dad. We'll count it, okay? Anyone else? Childhood years, high school years?
Basketball and I coach a lot of different sports.
Basketball, sportsman?
I swim, I bike, I run, triathlon.
Triathlon, all three. Anything else? All right, it's just kind of an icebreaker. I like to know what kind of sports folks I got. I'm, I'm a swimmer, runner and cyclist too, but I don't do the three combined. Um, all right, so eight habits of highly effective councils. We're going to go through each one of these in more detail. Um, so I'm not going to read all those to you. We'll get to them if I could get the next slide. So before I, you came to this meeting, did any of you or have any of you read your strategic plan here at Sweet Home? Yeah, raise your hands. It's okay. Your strategic plan. Yes, okay. What about your comp plan or comprehensive plan? Okay, what about transportation plan? How many of you knew that those things existed before you were elected? Yes, um, so these are, these are documents that exist. Um, and I have them featured, strategic plan, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, I'll start there. So strategic plan is something along what Jamie had mentioned, shared goals. Often, uh, the vision of the city is what brings everyone to council or in city staff. They want their community to go somewhere. They want it to be something and they have thoughts about what that could look like. So the strategic plan really can encompass that for each city. Most cities have them. And it gives that council and staff a direction. Usually it's longer term. It's not going to be a one-year thing. It might be ten, twenty, maybe forty years um, onward looking. Some of these other ones pictured the comprehensive plan and transportation plan. As you get into city government, you're going to learn that both the federal and state governments like to also tell local governments what they have to do. Um, while we do have home role charter authority, we are also preempted by those kind of larger governments that exist. So often, state statute does prescribe cities have these types of long-term plans related to land use schools. Um, I'm sure the city planners are more, really familiar with those. Um, if you're not sure what that is, you'll learn um, as time goes on as council. Um, so I was looking through your community strategic plan. I thought it was really great. Um, I thought it outlined specifically um, on page sixteen, it, it went through tasks for implementation. And it, it really was breaking down, okay, we've got a strategic plan here, but how do we actually take a bite at the apple? How do we get this strategic plan going? And so you mentioned, Mayor, that goal planning is on the horizon. Tell me a little bit more about that.
Um, next month, we have scheduled some work sessions to discuss goals for the future, so.
Excellent. Who on council has been uh, participated on a, on a goal-setting uh, session before? So the folks that have multiple terms under the belt, okay. What did that process look like last time? Just generally, we're not going deep into it.
On the wallpapers to write ideas down and then counselors each got a colored stickers to put next to those things that they liked the most, so.
So kind of.
Generally speaking.
Like a facilitated, let's get some ideas, let's see collectively where we want to go.
Correct.
Yeah, so um, was that helpful in your reflection?
Yeah.
Yeah? How was it helpful?
I think it was helpful to understand what different counselors had on their minds and to see what was of interest to them, so.
So kind of a collective sharing, getting to know what are these folks up here thinking and where do they want to go with, with the city? Great. Yeah, so as Jamie mentioned, that shared goal, you got to have, you got to know what those goals are. And these documents help assist the council as it's comprised today, which we all know if you're new uh, that every election cycle or a vacancy can occur for all sorts of reasons. You add a new person, you kind of can have a whole new council dynamic. So that strategic, thinking strategically, these documents can give the council and staff the ability to figure out, okay, are we going to Disneyland? Are we going to Disney World? What do we want to do? That's kind of the loose uh, analogy that we've got going on, thinking and acting strategically. And these documents can be revised and, and done. Some of them are required to be done every so often. Um, so that's just something to know that exists uh, for a city of Sweet Home. And if I could have the next slide. I guess I got ahead of myself there. So let's go, if I miss anything here, we already talked about annual goal-setting work session that's on the horizon. Um, it's been done before. How does your council monitor progress on any given goals? Do any of you know that, that process? And staff, feel free to chime in. We do have online dashboards that are updated monthly by staff. Online dashboards? I haven't heard that one before. Okay. What about on um, agenda items or agendas? Are there, are there references to any types of goals on, on, on agendas?
Yes, when items are placed on the agendas, often they're connected to a goal that they're achieving.
So it's strategic, that makes sense, right? You have a, a public meeting and you're going to all be here working on city business. What are we working on and what goal does it attributed to? That helps kind of the nuts and bolts of figuring out. Um, what about uh, budget message? Some of you on council may not be familiar with the budget process, but does, is that in, is that related at all in how City of Sweet Home does it? We are working this year to realign the timing of those so that the goals could better inform the budget. Excellent, okay. Um, and periodic reviews of existing plans and goals. So Mayor mentioned previous goals. Um, is that kind of a early part of the year? Does it have to go with terms? When are those done? We typically do it in the first quarter of the calendar year. First quarter, all right. So I think that sounds similar to what I've heard from across the state, just kind of different ideas on how, what are, what is the large picture? What's the vision? And how do we take bites of the apple to get that vision done? So we could do the next slide. So understanding and demonstrating teamwork. Jamie talked about team principles, shared goals, shared ownership, contributions, listening, um, participative decision-making. Um, what does demonstrating teamwork look like to each of you? There's no wrong answers. What does it look like city council-wise?
I think speaking up, sharing your opinion, um, and then respecting the vote, whatever the vote may be.
Respecting the vote, whatever it is, contributing. Yeah, what else can teamwork look like?
Showing up.
Showing up, excellent. Being a part of the actual process.
Listening to all opinions.
Being open, listening. Yeah, so understanding and demonstrating teamwork, just like sports. We've got a coach, coach up there. What is it, anything else that works well with a team dynamic?
Um, knowing people's strengths and weaknesses.
Knowing strengths.
Knows to your advantage.
So that you can tactic, make technical decisions, tactical decisions? Absolutely. That's a great addition. So some of you are getting to know each other, uh, month two. So um, how does your council demonstrate kind of getting to know others? Is there anything in place or practice outside of council meetings?
No.
Yeah, that's okay. There's no, well, as we also teach, which we aren't touching on today, is, you know, public meetings laws and all that stuff. So we, we know the restrictions. That wasn't to set you up at all. Um, often it was, you know, I've heard, we, you know, councils have dinner, they bring a bag, bag lunch, bag dinner. They kind of chat with each other um, during a work session, have it be a little bit more informal, have icebreakers, things like that. Because you guys, maybe you're not all strangers, maybe, you know, smaller communities, everyone tends to know each other, but larger communities often, the only thing you have in common is you're sitting on the dais. Um, and so kind of getting to know so that you can really start getting to know each other's strengths and weaknesses. What learned experience do you have? What credentials do you have that could be an asset? Because the shared goal typically is making your vision come to life and helping give direction to city staff so that you all can work together to make your community a better place. So anything that comes to mind, especially the veterans up there, uh, what would you like to see implemented in the future to develop that kind of teamwork, getting to know each other? Knowing we're not talking. Knowing we're not talking about, you know, public meeting law.
I'd love to hear from others, what they would like to see.
So kind of some one-on-ones. Great. Yeah. And, and maybe that is something you just think about as you develop moving forward. There doesn't have to be a specific answer, just kind of something to think about moving forward to garner that teamwork dynamic. If I could have the next slide. All right. Communication. Jamie talked about this. It's kind of one of the core components of, of a, of a team versus a group. And so breaking that down into a more nuanced approach. I think everyone has a style of communication that doesn't necessarily work with everybody. So you've got seven folks on council, seven ways of learning, seven ways of communicating. So to be that team or sports analogy, you gotta know how fellow counselors operate. What, how do they, do they, are they a visual learner? Are they an auditory learner? Do they have to take notes? Do they really listen better and process? Do they need time? Things like that. But some of the highlighted items, focus on behaviors, observe non-verbal messages. So most of us know you can communicate through your body language very, very easily. And so being mindful of that, and maybe that's not only just with your fellow counselors, but with the, with the general public, with city staff. That's a way that you can communicate. Allowing others to speak, avoiding absolutes. I think the best one that I've learned personally is I statements. I only can speak from my perspective. I have no idea what anyone else's experience or understanding is. And it can really, knowing that you guys have to deal with conflict and, and really difficult decisions, having that I statement kind of can help deescalate those really intense discussions. It takes away that projection, that automatic defensive behavior that can really occur when it's like, well, you're doing this. You're doing this. And if, especially if you're pointing and using your body language. So effective communication, is there anything that's worked really well for any of you all for effective communication? That's not listed? I'm always like curious what people think.
Rather be blunt, you know, we've just had meetings. We haven't done anything else. There hasn't been that much actual time in space interacting as a team. And what we've had, three meetings, three council meetings and a few work sessions. I mean, we just need to spend more time together.
You're not sure what the effective communication looks like. That's great. I think this is a great time to have this type of training, just to have in the back of your mind, extra tools in your toolbox as you move forward as a council. And having the staff and, and developing your relationships of having more time to figure out what actually works with this group of people. I can have the next slide, please. Effective small group decision-making. So clearly defining processes for making decisions. You know, one of the greatest things for having that is going to be your agenda packet. How, how many days in advance do you get your agenda packet?
Get it on Thursday night.
Thursday night and today is.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay. So a bit of time. That's, that's your compass, right? For the public meeting. So reading that, having questions in advance given to staff so that they have time to provide an answer at the public meeting, if possible, right? Not every request is, but having those questions conveyed, staff often really appreciates having time to adequately prepare a productive response for those types of things. Especially as, as it's a complicated issue, that can be a really great tool. Each member of the group identifies strengths and weaknesses and we've kind of touched on that. Group supports the collective goals. Jamie kind of also talked about that one. So we'll go to the next slide. So generally speaking, the next segment is going to go specifically into City of Sweet Home's governing documents that really specifically define roles and responsibilities. But in the context of effective groups and teams, you need to know where your lane is. And you need to know when you're getting out of your lane. Basketball, not a basketball. Well, swimming, I know swimming. I have to stay in my lane. If I'm going underneath the lane, I'm going to get disqualified and I'm going to be out. If I'm a basketball player and I'm the front person, yeah, really no basketball. I'm the lead, what's the position? Point guard. If I'm the point guard and I'm also trying to be the really tall person that's defending, I can't, I'm not, I can't do that. The team isn't going to work. I'm not going to be successful. The team isn't going to be successful. So knowing your role and knowing, if you don't know what that is, what all it entails for city council, charter, everyone look in front of you. This is Jamie. I was stealing Jamie's thunder. So there's some cool stickers that we like to hand out because we're nerds about charters. You'll appreciate this, Blair. So check your charter. Number one, if any city calls me for anything, I'm like, okay, got to find your charter. Got to look at your charter. What does your charter say? That is your city's constitution. That's the nuts and bolts, right? So charter, cool sticker and swag that we have for you. Just remember that's where you've, your first, your first friendly place to look is going to be your charter. And so that will also give you the basic function of government that the City of Sweet Home operates on. And there's always more to learn about that. There's other governing documents. We'll talk about those. City Council Rules of Procedure. There could be ordinances. There could be resolutions. There could be proclamations. There could be policies. It's all going to depend what the question is as to where you're looking. But those are things to become familiar with that really help you figure out roles and responsibilities. And even if you're, you know, seasoned and comfortable up there, you're not going to memorize every aspect. I mean, I read all of the council rules of procedure, for example. There's a lot in there. I do not have a photographic memory. I'm going to have to review that. I might read it and be like, in two months, situation comes, I think there's something about this. I just can't remember what it is. Well, you'll know where to look because you've reviewed it. So that's an example of knowing your roles and responsibilities. And that can apply also to commissions and committee members. Go to the next slide. So consistently evaluating policy implementation. So who provides updates of the overall progress here? Of the council? We can guess.
I'm not sure.
So how do you know? So councils generally set the policy, right? Policy, the direction. How do you know? How do you know how you're doing? How the policies come along? How do you know?
I'm not sure.
That's great answer.
I don't know. Is it public input, pub poke response?
Sure.
Staff input?
Absolutely could be. Public comment, public input. Maybe you're at the grocery store and you get an earful. Maybe you're at the coffee shop and you get information. You get feedback, right? I would say staff, you get the agenda packet, you get those goals, you get relation, you know, relative evaluations for that. You might have staff check-ins. You can have public comment. You can have elections. You can have surveys, talking with constituents. I think all of that is going to be different information facets for all, for everyone, staff and electeds alike. Next slide. So effective, an effective team must allocate their time appropriately. And this can look like a few different things depending on the situation, right? So we've talked about goal setting. That keeps the shared goal. That keeps the track. That keeps the, what are we doing? Are we going for the state championship? Are we trying to win regionals? It's the same with sports, right? What do you do if you just show up and you have no goals? Is it easy to follow through? Or do you kind of just like, does it just kind of, whoop? I said I was going to work out every month and it's February and I haven't been to the gym. But if you're like, I want to train for, I paid money to participate in a triathlon in six months. I'm going to put myself on a regimen. I'm going to check in and I'm going to do maybe an informal race on my, you know, on my own. It's kind of parallel to the sports analogy. You gotta have a goal. And you, you should be working towards that goal through those bite-sized pieces. Exploration analysis, that's going to look like your work session. So while this is more of like a training work session, there's other types of work sessions. What, what recent work sessions has the city had? And you can look back a couple of months.
Charter change for the mayor election.
Okay. Great example.
Transportation system, yeah, plan.
Transportation? Yeah.
Boards and committees.
Boards and committees. Yeah. How many do you have?
Right now, I just gave the presentation. What was it? Seven? Somewhere around there.
So we got seven committees and commissions. Yeah. So, um, you know, exploration analysis, those, you're getting information. You're learning how to move forward towards whatever goal or whatever requirement that the city has. Disposition and legislation, that's going to be your public meeting, right? That's going to make sure that based on your work session, you got information. You kind of did some deliberation. You learned, you discussed, you had that decision participative making process. And now you come to the public meeting. Maybe it's making laws and ordinances. Maybe it's taking the vote and having that. Making sure that you're running those public meetings efficiently. And we'll get into more detail on how that can be facilitated. That's going to be facilitated by, you know, knowing the council rules of procedure. That's going to be knowing the material on the agenda and prepared in that way. And then community relations. That could be things like town hall or city newsletters. Is there any specific practice in Sweet Home as far as kind of that regular interface with community relations?
Not currently. There's, it's in discussion.
Yeah, there's, I'm, I'm across, so we do trainings across the state. Every city is like a little different. There's different flares everywhere. So I've heard of like chat, coffee with the mayor.
Well, I do do that every week.
See? Well, there we go. Um, so community relations, that's an example. We've had videos from the city manager as far as what happened in a city council meeting. It's like 60 seconds council meeting recap. City newsletters, do you have anything on the utility bill? That's a pretty classic example. That's a great way. Most folks in your constituents have utilities. That's a great way to reach and update information to the constituents. Go to the next slide. So generally speaking, I think we're on a virtual meeting now, at least some virtual participants. So just generally ever since, as Jamie calls it, the plague, there's been a lot of changes in the law specifically related to public meetings that need to be reasonably possible, virtual. So we've all been on some sort of virtual meeting, most likely. So just generally same as you sitting in person, right? If you wouldn't do it in person, you probably shouldn't be doing it on the computer. That's just like the general rule. But, you know, test your tech, arrive early. Make sure you know how Zoom is currently letting you raise your hand. Is it hidden? I had to look for it like for a couple of minutes and I missed a chance to speak the other day because I didn't do that myself. You know, make sure you know how to rename yourself in the profile and have your full attention during the virtual meeting as well. We'll go to the next slide. So adopt applied here to procedural rules. So City of Sweet Home lasted a council review of their council rules of procedure in 2018. And that was required by your charter to have adopted rules of procedure. Now those rules can be changed and altered and amended and your council rules of procedure prescribe a process for it. So there, there's an avenue for revisiting council rules of procedure. Again, it's one of those documents that can be revisited. This current council and staff may think that something better could be in those rules. And future councils probably will think differently than you all. So they may change it. So in those rules, it's, it's the rules of the game, right? So if you're a basketball player, you need to know like how to play basketball, right? You need to know how many people can be on the court. Can they be on a certain part of the court? If you're a certain position, can you be, you know, what's the play? How long do you have to shoot the ball? What happens if, what happens, what happens? Those are the questions that will come up. In our arena, that's parliamentary law. So maybe not quite as sexy as the rules of basketball or triathlons. But that is, those are the rules of the game. So it's important to know where they are. And both as a presiding officer, as well as a council member and staff person, those rules apply to you as well as the general public. So it's all, we're all playing, we're all in the same arena, right? So those are important to be familiar with. We'll go to the next slide. We've kind of touched on this, but seeking objective assessments is another component, component of an effective council. So obviously elections, right? That's the first step. You're elected. An objective assessment, if you don't get voted back in, right? That's kind of the bare bones one. But you can learn a lot through surveys, newsletters, video updates, things like that. So that the city as a whole can work with the constituents, right? As to, is the stuff we're doing working? Is it not working? Also, the whole participative process of local government democracy is a public transparent process, right? That includes, you know, having all the parts working and communicating and having that collaborative opportunity to have the governance process in this space, right? So that's where some of the objective assessment comes from. And we'll do the next slide. So lastly, continuing education, and we've, we've talked a little bit about this. There's always more to learn. There's always laws that are changing. I don't know how many laws that are going to come out of this current long session that is going to upend something of how we do things. We're going to have to change and be nimble. Something new will be required. Same with the federal government, same with case law. There's always cases happening that may change how we have to do things on the local government side. So just being up to date with what's happening. LOC is here with resources. You can always reach out. Our cards are in front of you as well. But we do all sorts of offerings, elected essentials. We just got done with that. Municipal fundamentals, we'll be doing that this fall. We have on-demand trainings. City of Sweet Home is over 7,500, which is their typical cutoff of population for our small cities meeting. But if you wanted to attend, I'm sure they would have the open door policy. Lot, we have videos on our website. We have City Day, which is the lobbying day at the, in Salem. We have spring and fall conferences. We also have scholarships for those for attendance. We have a week, how many of you know about the LOC Weekly Bulletin? Excellent. It comes into your inbox. It's basically the top five or six things that are what you should know as you're moving forward in the week or months ahead. We have a bunch of publications and then City County Insurance Services is a counterpart, the city insurance. Folks are there for risk management, employment, stuff, things of that nature. So really knowing your role, what you personally bring to the table, know your strengths, maybe some things that you should work on. Develop those skills and really learn as a group. And that will really come in handy as you move forward with difficult decisions. Thinking about these types of things as you move forward as a group now, maybe you can become a team in the future that really makes that vision come to life. So I'm going to turn it over to Jamie.
Hey y'all, you're all still awake, right? Okay. I want to also highlight the fact though, that all these resources, with the exception of the conferences, which have a registration fee, are free. You can go on our website and you can find the over 100 publications that we have. And they're all geared to help you do your job better. And that's for staff and for elected officials. We don't get paid to say that. We don't get like, you click and we get some Google ad fee, right? This is literally, we recognize, you know, the more education and the more information that staff and electeds can have moving forward, the less risky behavior that you do. And the, the easier time you have staying out of trouble. Cause again, I really believe that everyone is here for the good reasons. And you are going to inadvertently do things that are not appropriate, like that either inadvertently violate public meetings law or public records law or your own roles and responsibilities. And you're not doing it intentionally and we recognize that, which is why we have so many educational materials out there. It's why we come to do these trainings is that we really try to, again, recognizing there is no how to be a city counselor one-on-one. We developed it. It's municipal handbook. So if you ever have, you know, all that extra time on your hands, because y'all are, have so much time on your hands, I'm sure, which is why you're here. Again, I really encourage folks just to at least go to loc.org, browse around, see what there is. There's something, something for everyone. We touch on all the things. So just wanted to plug that really as we develop it for a, a resource for you. Are you logging on our website right now? Okay. I was going to say kudos. I would get you another sticker, but you already have one. Next slide, please. So questioned, where can you find your role? Robin, you already kind of stole my thunder here. But where, where do you go? You have questions about what your job is? What is the first place you look?
Charter.
Charter. Absolutely. Your charter is the bread and butter. It is the one document that the voters get to speak to, right? You cannot amend the charter on your own. You can definitely propose a recommended amendment, which I know you guys are going to talk more about later today and I'm sure in the future. But ultimately the charter is only approved by the vote of the electors. Right? And so we talked about, you know, who's part of the team. And so we talked about, you know, who's part of the team? We got your elected councillors, you got your staff members. Well, the old, the other third is the people who are in the room today, right? It's the public. They're the ones who choose who sits in these seats. They're also the ones who choose to remove who's sitting in these seats. And they also have a role in the charter. So who here has recently read the charter? I won't judge you if you say no. Okay, I recommend, who, who, when was the last time you looked at the charter? Okay, great, that's fine. I recommend at the start of every year, take a look at your charter. There might be something in there that you didn't realize was helpful or valuable. I got you, I'm not, it's okay, I won't, you know, there's no grade, there's no quiz. Your charter, it is, it is, again, it tells you, there is in your charter, a rule that says what the council does. How many people is a quorum, right? How, how long is your term? Who do you have oversight authority over? Who can you hire and fire? Right, there's only two people in this room you have authority to hire and fire. And that is, anybody know?
City manager, city attorney.
Yep. And who else has, and then they have authority, basically city manager has authority to hire and fire everybody else, right? You have a municipal judge too, but that's kind of a weird one off. So you, you do have limited oversight on your charter, right? But then you have a thing called your council rules of procedure, right? Robin mentioned it a couple of times. It was last updated in 2018. I would really encourage everyone to look at it and see if the rules that are in here are still working for you. Because I don't believe anybody was on council in 2018, is that correct? You were, yeah. But it's a completely different council. And so the things that are addressed in your council rules of procedure might either be unnecessary at this point or there might be things that come up, maybe, and you might not know yet, right? A lot of folks are new, this is your third meeting. And that's okay, but you might realize there's things that need to be addressed with this council. I mean, we never know what the future predicts. Who had, who knew that the plague was on the bingo card? I didn't have the plague on my bingo card five years ago. Okay, no, no one predicted that. Right, and how much has that changed how we do business and city government, right? So you really never know. So I really encourage you to look at your council rules of procedure. That's the next document. First assignment is charter, second, it rules of procedures. And then if your rules of procedure are no longer serving you, you can amend them. You don't need, the public does not vote on it. You can certainly get their input, which is important, but you, you can change that unilaterally, however you would like as a council. And then in addition to those two big documents, then you also have ordinances or resolutions or other internal policies that might be developed by council or also by staff. So next slide, please. So now the answer's on the board, but what kind of form of government do you have?
Council manager.
Yep. And that is something that the majority of cities in Oregon have a council form of council manager form of government. That is not the same. East Coast does different things. Midwest generally has more of a strong mayor type of situation. Does anybody kind of have a good way of explaining in a nutshell what the council or council manager form of government is though?
The council makes policy decisions and hires a city attorney and a city manager. And the city manager does operations for the, the city.
Yep.
So that's one reason why council receives a small stipend, but does not get a salary. Correct. Because the city manager does the operations.
Yep, so the council is the policymaker. You're the visionaries, you set the strategic plan, obviously the input from staff. And then really essentially you say, all right, here's your budget, here's what we identified, good luck city manager, right? And that's, and that's exactly, that's exactly correct. And that is outlined in your charter. So cities can and cities have changed their form of government. Okay, two recent examples, city of Portland, they changed their form of government two years ago, right? And they're doing something weird. Don't ask me what their form of government is. Portland's doing the Portland thing and that's fine, right? City of Beaverton, they actually about four years ago had a strong mayor. So instead of having a city manager, their mayor essentially kind of served as a city manager, right? And it was like a full time position that was paid a salary and everything like that. Couple of years ago, they amended their charter to be a council manager form of government. So it's one of those things where it doesn't happen as often as other changes in the city. But certainly constituents can say, you know what? I don't think the council or manager form of government is working and we should change it. I actually think it's a great way to run a city. So I don't, not encouraging anybody to put that on the ballot or anything, but it is something that certainly cities can do. Next slide, please. So we'll start with the city council. So I already asked this earlier, does any single councillor have any authority? No. Big picture, you can do nothing, right? You, you probably, you know, some folks, they get really excited and real spicy about something that they sat in the audience and saw the city doing something they didn't like and thought, I'm going to go run for election and I'm going to change it. Anybody here want to admit that that was them? Great. And then you got elected and you got on council and you went to a training session or you read your charter and you thought, wow, gotta convince three other people, right? There's very little authority that you have on your own. Now, one thing that's interesting with city of Sweet Home is that the mayor votes every time, right? Just like other members of council. So in some cities, the mayor has zero voting authority. They may be a tiebreaker, but in some cities, they have zero vote. So I will say in a way, you have more power than a lot of mayors do in other cities because you are part of the process. You're one of those four voices.
Right, and I think that has to do with the way that I'm elected by the council and not by the general populace.
Right, so another thing that is not unique, but one way to have a councillor manager form of government is that y'all are elected as a group and then with amongst yourselves, you elect the mayor for two years. So in some cities, the public elects the mayor. Some cities, for example, Corvallis, they have, they have like nine or 11 councillors, but they are elected by wards. So the city is broken down into districts and then each district gets to elect a council seat. My understanding is Sweet Home just does it at large, right? Which is also a very common way of doing it. The hiring authority, so in the councillor manager form of government, the one person for sure that the council manages is the city manager. City attorney, that varies. Some cities, the city attorney reports directly to the council. Some cities, not as common, the city attorney actually reports to the city manager with oversight from the council. Some cities have oversight over police chief, maybe public works director, some of the department heads. And that again, is all, the beauty of governing in Oregon is every city can choose how to do it, how they, how best fits their community. And then again, that is outlined in your charter. The, the role of creating the budget. So I saw in your charter that the city manager is the budget officer. In some cities, that's not the case. In some cities, there's a finance director that takes over that role. And again, there is statewide budget law about who sits on the budget committee and everything like that as well too. But your, your power really is as a whole. Again, you're, you know, who, I'm sure there is a Facebook community group in Sweet Home, there is in every city. I won't go into details because it can get very spicy. But you're judged as a whole, right? How many times do you go on that community group and you see city council did this and it was awful? Right? Daily, right? I'm sure, I'm sure the public loves to tell you how good a job you're doing every day. Got to pat them on the back, right? So you're judged as, even though maybe you were the no vote in that decision, right? Maybe it was a four, three vote. It doesn't matter, the, the governing process, you vote a quorum, four people said yes, so the thing happened. You're judged as a whole, okay? I know there's something in your council rules of procedure that talks about when you are speaking on behalf of the city and when you're speaking on behalf of yourself as an individual, right? So in 2018, when these rules were developed, I'm sure there was an issue with when, when you're speaking in public, when you're representing and holding your council hat and when you are just wearing your normal Sweet Home citizen hat, right? And so you have rules about when you're, when you're representing the city and when you're not and how you make that clear. Okay, these are all things again, to help with the council's role and being judged as a collective. Robin touched upon how you're the policymakers, right? You're going to adopt your strategic plan, you're going to do the goal setting, really saying, hey, city, you know, here's where we want to go in five years. Here's where we want to see ourselves in 10 years, right? We want to go to Disneyland this year. This is how we're going to do that. Limited hiring, hiring authority. And then also there are some limited administrative and quasi judicial powers. So a lot of times in the planning world and planning commission, planning commission decisions can be appealed to the city council. But that's really more of a smaller role that the council has. Next slide. So your authority, your legislative authority, your lawmaking power, you do that by adopting ordinances, right? So just like the state lawmakers make things, they put, someone puts an idea. I think actually Sweet Home calls it a ordinance bill, right? It's a, it's a concept, someone thought either staff brought it to the table, hey, this needs to be addressed, or maybe a member of the community brought it to your attention. And you have certain, you discuss it, you have to read it, you might amend it along the way. And then you vote on it and it passes. And it has either effective date of immediately or 30 days or 90 days or whatnot. Your administrative power, while you don't hire and fire individual employees, there is a lot of oversight still on what the council has oversight on, on individual staff. Because what do you do? You adopt the budget. So you know, I don't know, public works director, thing, you start going rogue, things start going weird. And the, and the council says, yeah, we don't hire and fire you, but we're going to really, you know, kind of limit your funding for your department. You're going to have control over how many staff, right? The public works director has at that point. You have that control through the budget. Or, you know, you say, hey, city manager, we're not happy with how staffing's happening. And city manager gets disciplined or fired, right? There's still ways in which the council has that administrative authority, even with a pure council manager form of government, right? There's, there's annual reviews, I mean, sorry, city manager, I know you're like, great, way to highlight that. But yeah, there's definitely ways to know how good of a job you're doing and there is ways to influence that. And again, I talked about the quasi judicial, you know, the, the, maybe there's permitting things that the council oversees or land use, planning things that the council will have appeals to. Next slide. So again, I feel like I, I talk about this all the time. We talk about your charter, okay? Chapter two, section seven talks about the council, okay? It says there'll be seven of you. It says, you know, how often your positions are up for election. It talks about what happens when there's a tie vote. When is the, you know, first meeting of the new year, you elect your mayor for a two year term. And then it also talks about you have to have at least one regular meeting a month. It sounds like you guys meet though twice a month, is that correct? Right, but at a minimum, your charter says you have to at least have that one meeting a month. It talks about again, the quorum, and it talks about the vote required. So even if you have a quorum, you need to have a majority of that quorum present to pass any votes. Next slide, please. Talks about ordinances, there's a whole process in place on what you have to put in your ordinances, how often they have to be presented at a hearing, what kind of hearings those are when they're presented. Talks about again, your appointed officers, you got your manager, has your city attorney, your judge. I will say, I think it's pretty interesting that you have your city manager slash recorder as a single role. A lot of cities break those two roles up. Some cities don't even have a city manager, they just have a recorder. I think Sweet Home's in that sweet spot population wise, where you're not really, LOC doesn't consider you a small city, but you're still small enough, but then large enough to where like you have a city manager. And I'm sure there's lots, you have lots of thoughts on that. And then the council fixes compensation for all the officers and the employees. Next slide, please. So then another interesting section, and again, this really hones in on the separations of power and duties of the council versus the staff. You have a specific charter provision, and this is not, I would say 50/50 as far as across state, cities that have this and cities that don't. No council member shall attempt to influence the manager, right? You have it in your charter saying, if you do this, you resign your position. So that's kind of a safeguard and a check. And I think that it can be helpful. It's hopefully not necessary a lot of times. Hopefully, you know, you're not constantly having to point to that provision. But that is something that, you know, the voters have highlighted is that, yeah, they really want the manager to manage and they want the city council to do the policy and they don't want interference with that. Got to take note of office, right? Step one is something you have to do to be in office. So again, that's delineated in your charter. Next slide, please. So council rules, again, it's supplements. So there's nothing, your council rules cannot violate your charter. So if you look at like an upside down triangle, okay, it's like the food pyramid, right? But maybe I shouldn't bring in the FDA in this. Okay, you have the very top one is your charter, that's the base or very bottom, upside down. And then you have, you can narrow it down, right? So your charter is not going to address everything. It's impossible for your charter to address everything. So then you, again, you have your charter rules, which goes in. It talks more about, okay, what are the rules of council meetings? Right, it talks about more things about councillor duties versus city manager duties. It goes in and talks about all the details, talks about how to, how to provide public comment. I saw when I walked in here, there's a, if you want to speak at a council meeting, right? There's a form you fill out and members of the public can fill that out and then be called upon to speak. There's probably something in there about your agenda and the outline that you have to have for every meeting. Probably when public comments takes place is also in there. So again, council rules of procedures, they impact the council. The council has the authority to adopt them and amend them, but it also impacts staff as well too and the public. Next slide, please. So I love getting ahead of myself. And again, you know, we talked about what it does. You also do things in addition in your council rules of procedure. You specifically talk about public meeting law and public record law. And I'm happy, and I'm sure your city attorney is happy to also see that. You just basically say you need to follow the state law. So that's always great. Talks about minutes. So written minutes are required and the parameter is about that. And then next line. So that's, that's council duties. So any questions about your duties as a council as a whole? You guys are like, we're ready to move on, Jamie, stop talking, we know we're here. All right, Robin.
All right, so generally speaking, first, mayor, public face of the community. They represent the city at events. They sign, they usually have signing authority. They can facilitate discussions between councillors. They often get to set agendas or appoint committee members. And we'll go to the next slide to specifically talk about what's in your charter for your mayor. So the charter does have a specific section and the council selects mayor for two year term. It also has mayor at council meeting, chairperson, enforces rules, those rules we've talked about. That's the council rules of procedure, that's your charter. They, they make the meeting, they follow the agenda. They usually oversee public comment, the enforcement of any time, place, manner restrictions that are in your council rules for public comment. They can specifically determine order of business. I believe that's with the city manager. And they are authorized to cast a vote, which we've already talked about. Additionally, appoint to committees, fill vacancies in committees, sign instruments and writings required, which is such things like signing resolutions and ordinances. And then the council rules of procedure, represent the city on behalf of the council. So we'll go to the next slide. And then generally, usually council president is the term used in most charters, but here, president pro tem is in the charter. So generally, it's the substitute mayor. That's how I describe the president pro tem. So we'll go to the next slide. Specifically for Sweet Home, again, there's a specific section in the charter that describes the duties of the president pro tem. It's selected, that person, that position is selected, much like the mayor at the first meeting in the new term, two year term and performs the mayor duties when the mayor is absent. Additionally, the council rules of procedure does also have rules about the president pro tem. Council president shall preside in the absence of mayor, is the chairperson and again, is somewhat the substitute of the mayor when the mayor is absent. Those were my two quick roles. Any questions about the mayor or council president pro tem? All right, so back to Jamie.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, city manager, what do you not do? Okay, we're going to talk about, I didn't know what a city manager did before I started working at the league. My background was in state government and they don't really have city managers in state government. So easiest way to explain it is that your city manager is your chief executive officer. If you're running a business, it is the person who reports to the board, AKA the council. They're the ones who are in the, in city council, eight to five every day, or your guys' hours are slightly different, right? You're in the off, you're the ones dealing with the day to day running of the city. If you go to your charter, there are about two and a half, almost three pages that specifically just talk about, talks about the duties of the city manager. Okay, so we'll kind of talk about what those are. So the city manager is really your, your conduit between all city staff. So if you have an issue of something happening in the city, you really should be going to your city manager. Maybe sometimes your city attorney. They, they provide the council with objective information about local operations. So I'm sure at every council meeting, there's probably a city manager's report, right? And there's probably updates from different department staff potentially and things like that. They're probably going to identify, okay, here's this council question being presented. Here's the goal that it's related to. Here's information about your options and what you can do. There's option A and option B. Counsel, what would you like to do, right? Also, because I think the city manager is in city hall every day, they might identify things that are an issue to the community or as a city. They might recognize, or maybe in works, you know, with conjunction with the public works manager, hey, our water infrastructure is failing. We haven't looked at this water system for 30 years. Hey, council, probably wasn't on your, you know, like to do list, but that's something that we probably start talking about. And I don't know if that's actually happening in Sweet Home, it's just an example. He's like, it's great, our water's great. But these are things that really your C staff are, they're, they're trained to identify because they, they are professional staff who are paid to be here to identify and know those things. So next, next slide. So additional things, again, we talked about this council, the city manager serves at the pleasure of the council. Okay, you, you know, one thing about being a city manager is that you don't have one boss, you have seven or five, or however many people are on council, okay? The city manager then appoints chief of police, right? Other department heads, that is the city manager's job. And then the city manager can discipline and hire and fire those people along the way. Next slide. There's more. You enforce ordinances. Now, you might not be the Now, you might not be the one out there enforcing ordinances, I'm sure you might maybe work with the police chief a little bit or have a, you know, ordinance officer and whatnot, but essentially, that is your responsibility, okay? Overseen contracting, okay, city manager in Sweet Home is the contracting procurement person, right? They oversee all contracts, they attend city council meetings. City manager has to be at every single council meeting unless they have been specifically excused by the mayor or I think three counselors, I think that's what your charter says. Advise the council, chief advisor, right? Here's an issue, here's the research I've done. And she might defer to department heads depending on the issue. Appoint advisory boards as needed, so there may be times where, now there's committees that are appointed by council, but there's also committees that may or may not be appointed by staff. And then also serve as city recorder, which that one is actually kind of unique. A lot of cities split those two positions up. But that also tells me then you probably deal with public records and retention and all those things that are fun about dealing with the city. Next slide, please. And then there's more, keep going on about this. So I talked about this earlier, how the council, there's a provision that says that the council should not influence the manager. Okay, you have a professional manager, let the manager do their job. Contract awards, grant applications. Again, the council needs to be careful about mingling in city staff. There can be, you can put the city at liability if you start dealing with personnel issues outside of the two employees that you manage. I highly recommend, especially if new councils, have a conversation with your city manager about their comfort level with you addressing individual department heads. Without authority granted by the city manager, I would highly recommend that no city counselor specifically goes to addresses individual staff members. Now, in a lot of cities, city manager might say, yep, I have no problem talking with the police chief, right? Please address them when you have these issues. In some situations, that might not be appropriate. So again, you don't want to overstep your lane because that's, that essentially what that means in lawyer talk is that you're going to get sued, or you have the ability to get sued if you start going in a lane that you're not supposed to be in. When you have questions from the public, a lot of times, you don't have the ability to answer that question as it's presented because you have an agenda and that wasn't on the agenda, and you weren't prepared to answer that question. Is very much appropriate to say, hey, city manager, let's have staff follow up with